All right. Good morning, everyone. Happy Monday. Let's stand and start with a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, we come to you this morning, once again grateful for the roles that you have given us to handle county business on behalf of everyone within Titus County. Lots of different subjects that we deal with, and we pray for your wisdom and direction on each because we don't have the capacity to make that perfect decision. We just turn this agenda over to you and just ask that you bless each item on that agenda. Be with our first responders in our city and in our county. Be with our servicemen and women all across the globe. Please bring them home safely. We thank you for the coming rain in advance, in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to everyone today. Thank you for being here. It's just after nine o'clock. Today's the 24th of October, 2022, and we're here for our, what I think will be our final meeting of the month, our second, what I'll call, regular meeting, although we call it a special meeting. Item number one is opportunity for public comments and/or requests for information on non-agenda items. You may certainly address the court on any item as we get to it, but if there's anything that's not listed out here, this is your opportunity to speak. All right. We'll move on. We've got three sets of minutes for your consideration. Item number two was an October 7th Friday meeting. That was our first regular meeting of the month, but it was held on a Friday due to the Monday holiday. So let's take that set of minutes first for your consideration, if you're okay with that. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the October 7 minutes by Commissioner Parchman, second by Commissioner Fitch. Discussion, questions? All in favor of approval, say aye. Item number three was from October 13th. We had a workshop in here in the courtroom with our American Rescue Plan Act consultant from Tyler, and so that was the meeting of the 13th.
Make a motion to approve the meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes of that October 13th meeting made. Commissioner Fitch?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Parchman. Discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then lastly, we had a meeting last week on the 17th, a special call meeting to discuss the ongoing consideration of our fire protection here within the county, and that had its own set of minutes as well.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve that set of minutes. Commissioner Fitch?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Item number five is report from commissioners regarding roadwork status, what they're working on. Commissioner Parker, I'll start with you.
We just finished up mowing right of ways, and we've got a couple of roads we're going to start scavenging this week, and got a couple of big trees we've got to try to get down this week that have died, and so we're at them.
All right. Commissioner Applewhite?
We've been blading quite a bit of roads on County Road 1905 down to the bottom. We finally got that road back where you can drive them, and we've been mowing and picking up trees.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Fitch?
We've been doing some tree work, cut down several trees on 2200 and on 1165, and we'll continue to do that since we've lost a lot of trees this year. We've been doing some paving and some potholing, just kind of all around the county, 45, 50. We did some covering up, some soft spots that we dug up and put some hard rock in it. We finished mowing all the right of ways, and we've done a lot of side cutting, and we're going to continue to do some more of that.
That's it. All right. Thank you. Commissioner Parchman?
We've been doing some patching, installing a few cords, still side cutting and still mowing.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Item number six, welcome Pam Holmes, our elections administrator. Today, we're going to consider and possibly approve the election judges and their alternates for this upcoming election season. Welcome, Pam.
Thank you. These judges and alternates have been presented to me by the party chairs, and they'll be in effect for the years of 2023 and '24. As it stands right now, the Democrats hold the judgeship in boxes 1, 8, and 17. So the ones that I mentioned for 1, 8, and 17, the Democrats will be the judge and the Republicans will be the alternate judges. So for the Democrat election judges for these next two years, now that may change with the election this year because it's dependent on if that box carries which gubernatorial candidate, if it carries a Democrat candidate or if it carries a Republican candidate. So it could, the judgeship could go either way, but the judges and the alternates, it could just flip. Okay. So precinct number one, that would be Bruce Oco. Two, Helen Rockwell. Three, Janice Chisholm. Four, Bridget Minter. Five, Deb Mears. Six, Brenda Price. Seven, Toni Fleming. Eight, Donna Norman. Nine, Lola McGill. Ten, Gail Hill. Eleven, Teresa Young. Twelve, Brenda McGill. Fourteen, Sylvia Morales. Fifteen, Grace G. Sixteen, Waylon Payne. Seventeen, Mary Castaragna. Eighteen, Josie Spraglin. Nineteen, Betty Nels. And twenty is Bobby Williams. And we have, the 21 is the early voting location, and that is Sylvia Morales. I'm sorry it's not listed on there. On the representative, the Republican page, on number one, it's Karen Orr. Number two, Karen Gatherer. Number three, Russ Radke. Number four, Peggy Zurcher. Number five, Tammy Case. Number six, Janice Brooks. Number seven, Jim Petty. Number eight, Neta Walker. Number nine, Cindy Harrison. Number 10, Gary Oliver. Number 11, Sharon Mitchell. Twelve, Linda Zapata. Fourteen, Paula Dial. Fifteen, Lori Stringham. Sixteen, Phyllis Welch. Seventeen, Gina Jones. Eighteen, Carol Peterson. Nineteen, Rhonda Kittle. And twenty, Frank Stringham. The early voting location, the judges, Paula Dial. If there's, oh, I need to, on our early voting ballot board, the presiding judge is a Republican, and that's Emily Aitken. And on central count, the presiding judge is also a Republican, and that's Ronnie Foster.
Okay.
Any names on here that you might not agree with? They, like I said, the party chairs submit these, and I look through them and agree with them, so.
Looks like you've got some new names and some of the old reliables on there?
We do, we do. So it's, I think it's good to have some of both.
Sure. And you had, you were able to fill every position? That's good.
Yes.
And this will literally cover the calendar years 23 and 24?
23 and 24.
Okay. And just give us a glimpse of what we have coming in 23 in the way of elections.
We, right now, we only have the May uniform election and the November general election. That could change. The city may hold an election, I don't know, they haven't given me that information yet. Like, for example, on this election, that just, early voting just started today, by the way, Chapel Hill is on our ballot, so we've got them coming along. So we do elections for other entities, and we just wait until they ask us to do them, so.
Go over for us one time the early vote hours and days.
We have two weeks of early voting this time. This first week, it's eight to five, Monday through Friday. We do have weekend voting, Saturday and Sunday, 12 full hours on Saturday, so seven to seven, six hours on Sunday, noon to six. And then we'll start up again on Monday, and the first three days will be the eight to five. The last two days of that are 12-hour days, so they're seven to seven. And then, of course, election day is on November 8th, and that's a 12-hour day, so that's seven to seven as well.
All right. Busy time again for you.
It is busy, yeah.
All right. Thank you for bringing this. Commissioners, do you have any questions here for Pam regarding her election judges or any other subject related to her responsibilities? All right, Pam, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
And just while you're there, just a little PR statement. For those of you that don't know, our beloved custodian, David Holmes, has moved back or is planning to move, or has he moved back?
He's planning to get back down here, yes.
Okay. He went up and gave some assistance to family members in Oklahoma, but he is heading back towards Mount Pleasant, and he is looking for a job. You know what kind of quality person David is, so if you know of any job opportunities out there that would be a good fit for David, and I know that there's lots of them out there, we just need to help them make the, make the match for him. We want to see him end up in a wonderful place. So, anyway.
Thank you for that.
A moment for David.
Mr. Fitch, did you have a question?
Hmm?
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you so much.
All right. We need a motion to approve these that Pam has presented to you, unless there are any questions.
Make a motion to approve the judges.
Motion made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Item number seven, consider and possibly approve a business name change related to the county landscape maintenance company. And seated back there in the back is none other than Nick Lewis. Nick, I've got more pieces of paper devoted to you today than anything else on the agenda. So Barbara, I'll give a little bit of an overview. If you'd like to give an overview, I'll let you, but let me get started, and you can fill in the details, which is your, what you're good at. When Nick bid the job to do our landscaping maintenance, which he's currently doing right now, he bid it in his individual name or was it as Lewis Enterprises?
It's the same.
Well, again, and sometimes in our minds, it may be the same, but in the minds of those that are detail-oriented, where we have to be, it may be, you know, there's, a name is everything, and in that case, that's what we're dealing with here. But when it came time to provide the necessary insurance proof that is asked of any of our contractors, and specifically here for Nick and his workers that do the landscaping, we got certificates of insurance in a different name, which is also a business that Nick owns, and that's called Sun Crane &amp; Hoist. Is that the name of it? And we've got Nick here, and Nick's going to kind of tell you the evolution of this, but I believe that in, it was never Nick's intent to, you know, to mislead anybody. It's just that, as I understand it, he has all of his insurance, including work comp, under the umbrella of Sun Crane &amp; Hoist, but that was not the business entity that he bid our work on. And so when Barbara was reviewing this, it's very clear in the, in the regulations that we have to go by is that we need to have a business entity that bid on our job match up with the certificates that are provided by the insurance company. And so Barbara spent a good bit of time back and forth with emails between myself and Nick and John Mark Coburn, and John Mark did review this for us. And so we have several options here. Because we have this differential, it can have serious repercussions. We could end the contract. The bid states that Titus County may cancel the contract at any time for any reason within 30-day notice, or ask the commissioners to approve the change from the sole proprietor name that we had initially to a corporation, that matching Sun Crane &amp; Hoist, Inc. The bid documents state that the contract could be canceled in the event of a change in ownership or management unless a mutual agreement is reached with no changes to provisions and prices, and it also states that the contract is non-transferable. So what do you want to add to that? And then we can get Nick to tell us a little bit about what's going on, but I think in summary here, we've got a, you know, we've got a recommendation that's coming from John Mark Coburn, but Barbara's the one that spent most of the time dealing with these details, so I want to give her a chance to address this.
Judge, well, you've done an excellent job, and I only have a couple of things to add. It's just the timeline. Mr. Lewis was very quick to send us his insurance document, but it was from Sun Crane &amp; Hoist. So I sent him an email on July the 11th or 12th to let him know. So we've been working on this back and forth, back and forth, trying to decide what we needed to do. I sent that information to you commissioners, and the original document that he sent to us was Nicholas K. Lewis, owner, sole proprietor. That's the reason why we could not accept Sun Crane &amp; Hoist, Inc., because that's a corporation, that's a separate entity. So Mr. Lewis has now asked us to go ahead and change the name. I've had John Mark look at it. He thinks that that's completely reasonable. I believe Mr. Lewis has been doing the work since it started July the 1st. We have not paid him because those documents are to come to my office for approval before the work begins, but he's done the work. I think that we're pleased with the work that would be for y'all to determine, but at this point, it's your pleasure if you want to go ahead and approve that. I think that we have the documents in place. We will have to make the checks and pay them to Sun Crane &amp; Hoist, not to Nicholas, not to Nick Lewis.
Okay. And as far as the insurance goes, probably it was a situation, and Nick, you can come up, if, in fact, why don't you just give us a couple of minutes here of what was going on? My read on this is that, yeah, you could have gone out and gotten insurance in the name of, you know, Nick Lewis Enterprises, but that would probably have cost more money than putting everything under your umbrella of Sun Crane. But some of these guys have no clue what Sun Crane is, so kind of enlighten them on that and just what was going on here.
I understand, I understand. I apologize, and I'm sorry to waste your time this morning on something this small and minute, but indeed, I maybe made a mistake there. I did not realize that it was, would be that detailed-oriented. My maintenance crew does fall under our workman's comp and automobile liability policy for the crane company. That's who they're actually employed through. We run around Mount Pleasant as Lewis Enterprise, which we have since 2014. I do have general liability for Lewis Enterprise, but because they're already underneath my crane workman's comp policy, it's almost impossible to insure them twice. I presented all three documents for Lewis Enterprise general liability, for the Sun Crane workman's comp, which they belong under, and then, of course, the liability policy for the vehicles, that's also under the crane company. So that's just a mistake on my behalf. Maybe if I should have explained that at the beginning, we could have sailed through this a little bit smoother, or I could have gotten some better direction on just changing the entity name at the beginning instead of 90 days later. But I appreciate all the work that's gone into this, and hopefully we can come to resolution. But that's, that's a short story of what's going on, so thank you.
Does Lewis Enterprise, is that, what activity goes on within that entity? And does it have its own tax return? Is that, is that on your personal tax return? Or is everything under Sun Crane?
Lewis Enterprise is underneath my personal tax return. It's just a DBA for Nicholas K. Lewis. Yep.
The payroll that is given to the workers that work and do the landscaping, are they issued checks from Lewis Enterprise or from Sun Crane?
They're issued checks from Sun Crane &amp; Hoist. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm glad you can keep track of all that. So really, we have, the same guys that did our work years ago are doing the work now? It's the same operation, but the primary reason here, if I'm hearing it right, is to conserve insurance premium dollars? Would that be a fair statement?
Yes, sir. That would be the most logical way to say it. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. So in short, John Mark Coburn's line is, let's get the commissioners' court to accept the corporation instead of Nick individually. That's an easy fix. If there are other issues here you want to know more about or have questions answered, here's your opportunity.
I'm good with it. You do a good job, too. Appreciate you. Make them really look and get it.
Okay. So I think the suggested motion would be that, Barbara, help me here, is that we accept a change of name in the insured entity to that of Sun Crane &amp; Hoist that is performing the duties of our landscape management. Does that encompass everything, or do we need to expand that?
The bid documents say any benefit change in ownership, so I think we need to say a change in ownership from Nick Lewis, DBA Lewis Enterprises, to Sun Crane &amp; Hoist, even though Mr. Lewis is the owner of both of those entities.
Okay.
They're separate legal entities.
So if somebody asks you, who owns your landscaping company? Is it Nick Lewis Enterprise? Is it Nick Lewis, DBA Lewis Enterprises, or is it Sun Crane &amp; Hoist?
Well, I own Lewis Enterprise, okay? My guys work for the crane company. We run their payroll through there just for savings.
Okay.
If I introduce myself here in Mount Pleasant, it's a landscaping business, it's Lewis Enterprise, and I'm the sole proprietor of that.
Okay. All right. So do we have a change in ownership as far as the county's concerned from who originally bid these documents?
I don't believe so. I don't believe so. I'll be the same one managing it, and the same guys will be here doing it, the same vehicle. Just be depending on who you want to cut the check to.
How do you, how do you interpret that, Barbara? Because I'm confused, frankly.
If a sole proprietor is a separate legal entity than a corporation.
Agree.
So, to go from the regional documents of sole proprietor to Sun Crane &amp; Hoist, we would need to approve a change in ownership. And that's stated in the bid document. And if these documents had originally come in with Sun Crane &amp; Hoist as the bidder, we would have accepted that as well. I mean, his bid was the lowest bid. I mean, he's got a history of work with the county. But the only way, I mean, when I read this, the only way, only two options, or to approve the change in ownership or end the contract. Mr. Lewis has done the work for three months. Now, it's unfortunate that he's done the work for three months and we've not hated him, but without the documents in place, I can't approve those.
So his employees were, your employees work for Sun Crane &amp; Hoist?
Yes, sir. They do.
Then I would consider this to be a change in ownership.
Okay.
And I think that that's what we have to approve. So I'm not sure exactly how you worded it there, but I think that the motion should be that we approve a change in ownership from Nick Lewis doing business as Lewis Enterprise to Sun Crane &amp; Hoist, which matches the insurance documents. Is that fair?
And the tax forms are already in place, too. We have already sent her the new W-9 sheet.
And I believe I have a copy of that. There it is.
I'll make a motion.
Well, I think Commissioner Applewhite started that, so anything about how we ended up with the wording on that that you're not okay with?
I'm okay with it.
All right. So I've got a motion.
A second then.
And then a second by Commissioner Fitch. Is there any discussion or any question for either Barbara or Nick? All in favor of this motion, say aye. All right. Thank you, Nick.
Appreciate you.
Item number eight, back to the subject of fire protection. And I've broken this one item into a long list of four sub items, and at least three out of the four of these, I've tried to mimic what the city did at their most recent meeting. Chief, was that last Tuesday?
Yes.
Last Tuesday. Okay. So a week ago tomorrow. And this continues to, you know, day by day and week by week, we seem to be working back and forth, but as far as what I feel like we can approve right now is essentially to mimic what the city council has done. And so we're going to consider and possibly approve the following items, all of which are related to fire protection contract with the city, both now and in the future. A would be to rescind the one-month extension of the existing fire protection contract that was approved on October 7th. So that was where we, we needed to go beyond the September 30th ending date of our longstanding 10-year-plus-two extended years fire protection contract with the city. And then, in item B, we're going to replace that with the extension of a contract with the city and take that to a one-year extension. That would go from October 1 of 2022 through September 30 of 2023. And the price tag for that one-year extension, as set by the city council, is $1.3 million. Item C, we will continue to evaluate the possibility of the formation of a county fire department, which was the primary subject matter at our last meeting. But that would be a county-owned and directed and funded fire department. And then lastly, while we're doing that, consideration of a county fire department, we will continue to be open to negotiating a long-term contract with the city. So we've put all this in there because we want to continue to keep all options open. But first and foremost, I think the most important one on here is item B. We've got to have continued coverage provided by the city, and they are willing to give us at least this one year for $1.3 million. So we need to consider any and all these. If there's something on here you want to scratch off or reword, feel free to do so. Chief, is there any, any message you bring from the city council that's not reflected here? Is there anything that I might have wrong here or that needs to be changed?
No.
Okay. So commissioners, this is your opportunity for, for comment, for question, and ultimately for action, if any.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Okay. Just as it's stated here?
Yes, sir.
All right. So Commissioner Parker makes a motion that we do approve, in fact, item A, B, C, and D as part of item number eight.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. Any discussion opportunity here?
I'd like to see this contract. We already give them the one month, and we should start it in November instead of September, October, you know? That gives us a full year.
This is what the city voted and approved on, so I understand what you're saying. All right. I have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So we have one opposition there. Thank you very much. Chief, thanks for being here. Anything you want to say while you're here?
No.
All right. We'll move to item number nine, consider and possibly approve the demolition of a house related to the FM 1735 road project. house related to the FM 1735 road project. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, and I'll let Jimmy carry the bulk of this conversation, this was a house that we knew was going to have to be removed from the get-go. And as we get closer and closer to having all of our right-of-way purchased and/or in the midst of relocating the utilities, is this, is the road or the right-of-way going to actually be where this house is, or is this a utility moving need on this one? Just because I'm curious.
It will need to be removed for the utilities to be moved, electrical.
Okay. And since this falls under your, you know, at least the location of it falls within your precinct, what is your thought process on the removal of this house before we discuss the bid and the dollars that have been presented here today?
Well, it's something that we, well, Gary told us in the meeting back in July, I guess it was.
That's Gary Lubah?
Yes. And from Lotnir. And he had, you know, had told me that we needed to figure out how we wanted to move it, if we wanted to do it ourselves or if we wanted to hire it done. I really don't have the time or the means to do so. And so I called a couple of people and asked them if they would be interested in it and talked to them. And I've got, I've got one written bid. The other one told me that he would not be willing to burn it, that he would have to haul it all, and that it would be considerably higher than the bid that we've got. Because he'd have to pay for everything, you know, haul it all to the dump and everything. And so this bid that we have here, this written bid, is for the demolition of the trees and the house itself and burning it on-site.
Okay. And again, this doesn't, this project isn't a good fit for your equipment and manpower. And the other bidder, why was, is it, what's the difference in burning it on-site versus hauling it away? I mean, I understand the difference, but why would anybody not want to just say, heck, I'll just leave it there and burn it?
He told me that he had done that on a few occasions and that he had had some problems with the, you know, with doing that. And this other bidder said that he had done it on several, had done it on several occasions and had never had any repercussions out of it, so.
Okay. Any reason why you think that Chief McCray, for example, would not be okay with us burning it on-site?
Don't think so.
Any other TCEQ regulations or anything that we would need to consider here?
No.
Okay. Well, then let me read this proposal that we've gotten from Stansel Construction. We've worked with Stansel on the, on several smaller projects, but primarily the large project there at the Justice Center. So this is a disposal of the Payne, P-A-Y-N-E, I guess that's the name of the owner of the house. The White Frame House on FM 1735. This will be a burn in place, including the adjacent trees, not responsible to damage to other trees on property. Are there other trees on the property that we don't own now that's considered part of the right-of-way acquisition? Are we on the edge of anything where a burn could potentially damage somebody else's property?
No, sir, with where he'll, where he'll burn it, there shouldn't be any other problem.
He would also clean up and dispose of debris, including the masonry that's left there? Is this a, what kind of masonry is there?
It's partially, it's brick. I'm trying to think. Around the bottom of it, it's got a, had a concrete slab there that, for a carport. But I mean, there's not that much of it. There's just a minimal amount of that.
So he'll bust that up and haul that away, not bury it where it would be a problem for the road job? This would include the house and the attached structures only? The detached barns, et cetera, are not included? Are those something that's going to have to be removed, or those can stay?
Those are, those are still on the people's property.
Okay.
They're off behind the.
Okay. Looks like you've got something to say.
Yeah.
All right.
Somebody needs to be planning on it. How is it insulated? Does it have a shingle roof? And is, are they going to remove the shingles and the wiring? Does it have insulated wiring?
Clint, I'm not for certain on that.
That would be where I would see that there might be a problem. If it doesn't have a composition roof on it, then I would say, you know, probably go ahead and destroy it in place, especially if it's an older home that isn't insulated. But if it's got fiberglass insulation in it, composition roof, I think the idea of turn it down, fold it up, haul it off in a truck would probably be the best and would be less liability for the county.
Okay. Who should we have evaluate that?
Well, it sounds like one of the ones who gave the bid was already taking that into consideration. But that would be something that, I mean, a home inspector could look at and see. I just, I think that hauling away, paying for disposal on it, it's going to be a greater expense, of course, but I think there'll be less liability.
The shingle roofs have what kind of material that causes a problem?
They, well, they're asphalt shingle. They've got fiberglass in them. Just all kinds of good stuff that's not supposed to be burnt. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. So would your recommendation be get a home inspector over there first and tell us what we've got?
Possibly, or that, or just go ahead and plan on hauling it off.
Do we even have a ballpark idea of what it would cost to have it hauled off?
He just threw a figure out there at me, and I mean, he went out and looked at it. It was Cameron who it was, and he went out and looked at it. And it was about $2,000. The figure he gave me was about $2,000 and a half higher than that one.
$2,000?
Yeah.
That seems like, that seems like an easy decision to me.
Yeah.
By the time we have a house inspector out there, we'll pay him $500 or something.
I can, I can call Dennis and get him to give me a written bid on it. I mean, that, you know, and then tell us exactly what it's going to be.
Has he actually looked at it in any detail? So maybe he could tell us you've got asphalt singles and you've got asbestos in the walls?
He probably could.
Why don't we do that? Why don't we, before I even mention this price on this burn, first of all, I appreciate you bringing that up. I wouldn't have thought anything about that. Why don't we table this and get a formal bid? Give Stansel an opportunity to do the same thing. And Cameron and anybody else. And let Dennis maybe tell us why this particular job is better hauled away. I don't think he has a problem burning anything, but.
Well, he told me that he had had some problems here in, you know, in the county when he had burned some things before. And he said, they kind of frown on me every time I try to burn something. He said, so I wouldn't even attempt to do that. That was what he told me, so.
Okay. Would that be acceptable that we table this and get another bid or bids for consideration with an explanation from him, whose opinion I trust as to why this probably shouldn't be burned? I mean, we don't want to take any chances here.
No, because these people's house is back a little further back off the road from this, the people that own that property. So I make a motion we table it until I can find out some more information.
All right. Got a motion to table this matter? Yes, ma'am.
Really, it's just a comment. We need to make sure that we get insurance on whoever it is that we decide to do the work. I think both of those companies, Stansel and Cameron, have the insurance, but I don't know that we have those on file that are current. So when they do their bid, they need to include the cost of insurance if they.
I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure Cameron does because we went through that with something that.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure both of these do. Are these really, are these really bids or proposals? Or either way, that's a good suggestion. Get, get, Stansel may not, may not even be interested in doing this, I don't know, but whoever bids on it, let's go ahead and say, hey, provide us your certificate of insurance as well. Okay. Was that, Jeff, did you second that?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion and a second to table. All in favor, say aye. Thank you, Sergeant Bane. Item number 10, consider and possibly approve the installation of a handicap accessible electric entry door system for the public elevator entrance on the ground floor of the main courthouse. Okay, this was an item that came up during our discussion about some upgrades related to handicap accessibility. And I think as of this morning, we've got some new handicap parking places. We have one right out here on the north end next to the light pole. Did they do one down here on the corner of the square here in the southwest corner? There is one. And then there's also one across the street. Did he do one there by the railing? A handicap spot is already there? Because he had, because he had just done it, or it's been there for a long time? I thought that that was one of the specific items that we discussed, having him add on there. We took them off the back, and we didn't replace them on the front. Okay. So we have two new handicap accessible spots, one on the north end, one on the south end of the courthouse. That's as far as we've gotten so far. This is a major cost item. This would enable somebody that was unable to pull that hard-to-open door. That's a tough door to open. It's got a lot of tension on it to make sure that it closes back and stays shut. And pulling that door open and propping it open while somebody with limited mobility, whether they have a cane or a walker or a wheelchair, makes it tough. This proposal is a fairly elaborate job. In fact, as I understand it, this proposal from Taylor Glass would be done by a third party. Is that what he told you? This would involve essentially the entire replacement of that whole, that whole unit that includes the door, the glass above it, the glass on either side of it would be completely replaced. The underground opener that's in this particular door would go away. And what we would end up would be with an electric door that would have a pressure switch there in the side of the door where somebody could tap that, and the door would open automatically. Now, that goes on both sides there. The door could still be locked, but it would be fully automatic. And if that's, you know, before we discuss pricing, I don't know anybody else in town that's capable of doing this, that has the capability to do this. This is a $7,500 ballpark job in order to do that, so it's a fairly expensive deal. But it's, as far as accessibility to this building, it is really the sole entry point for anybody that's got a permanent or temporary handicap and doesn't have the ability to climb up the stairs and doesn't have the ability to open that door and keep it held open. So if that's something that you're interested in doing, here we have this opportunity. If you want to go a different direction or you want to put an expense like this on hold, you know, whatever you want to do. But this is a proposal at $7,585. Again, not cheap, but a fairly substantial job.
I say we do it and make a motion to replace the door.
All right. Well, I have, before we discuss, I have a motion here to go ahead and proceed with this job. If you're interested in doing that, I would like to bring you back a complete detailed description of what it, you know, he didn't even have any, this is going to be a custom job. He didn't even have a picture of something like this. But I'd feel better if you let me go back to Bo Taylor and say, hey, give me some more description here other than just say door for elevator area. And that's not a negative comment on him. It's just, this is what he's given us. And I want to be able to tell you exactly what it is that you're going to get for your money. But I do have a motion, and there's no problem with approving this, but why don't you make it pending approval of a description of the work?
Pending approval of the specs.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parkman. All in favor, say aye. Okay, item number 11, consider and possibly approve a memorandum of understanding with the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service. Hurley Miller, you know Hurley, that meets with us every December for our training, said it's that time to get paperwork. In other words, I think this has gone on longer than they had intended, and his charge was to go back to all of his counties and get a new current agreement in place between Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service and, in this case, Titus County. We can name the period of time that we want this to be effective for, and it does automatically renew. But he said suggestions would be one year, five years, 10 years. But this goes through basically a description of the services that AgriLife provides. It doesn't talk about any monies here, but, and it continues to go over the fact that AgriLife has its own budget. We fund certain items that are part of providing that office here to our taxpayers. But again, it just is a, it goes over a definition of the services that AgriLife provides for us. I would recommend a five-year contract so that this can stay fairly current on our minds each year, and then we'll review and evaluate every so often. But there's no significant changes at all to this other than what, over what we have, the relationship that we have had with AgriLife in the past. So I would ask that you approve a five-year memorandum of understanding with Texas A&amp;M AgriLife.
Make a motion? A second.
Motion and Fitch and Parker, second. Any questions or comments on this? You've got a copy of that. All in favor, say aye. Item number 12, consider and possibly approve holidays for 2023. James has put this together for you. I think it's the same roster of holidays that we've got this current year that we are in. The only one that James and I were discussing earlier, and this is something I would bring to your attention, is next year at Christmas time of 2023, you have Christmas that falls on Monday, the 25th. And we typically give a Christmas Eve and a Christmas Day holiday. So I think it's obvious that Monday, the 24th is an, I mean, the 25th is an appropriate holiday. Would that second day that goes along with the Christmas holidays be more appropriate on Friday, the 22nd, that we would call our Christmas Eve holiday? Or do you want to deviate and go with a Tuesday, the 26th holiday? Either way, I think you're looking at a four. Either way, I think you're looking at a four-day weekend, whether it's Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, or Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. James has it presented here with what he thought was best, and that would be a Friday, the 22nd off.
Make a motion, we'll accept the holidays like they are.
Okay, you like this one? All right, motion to approve the 2023 Titus County holidays as presented here.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then also, we do this, at the same time, we approve holidays. Here is a proposed 2023 Titus County Commissioners Court dates, and the Commissioners Court will be held on the second and fourth Mondays of each month at 9:00 a.m., except when this falls on a holiday. And we have one down there in October, where we have a Monday holiday that would otherwise be our, be our meeting day. We're suggesting that Friday, October 6th, take the place of that Monday meeting.
Make a motion, we approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Parker. Jim, James pointed out to me, you do have another one there on December 21st, which is a Thursday as opposed to, that would be a, what, a Christmas Eve holiday on Monday? 21, 21, 22? That's right, we just talked about that. Okay, so Thursday before the Christmas holidays as opposed to afterward, I think that would definitely be the way to go, to get that meeting in on the 21st, before you have that holiday there that we just discussed on the 22nd. So a motion as presented by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. Any discussion or questions on any of these dates or days? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 14, approve oral and written reports.
Make a motion, we approve.
Motion is made for approval by Commissioner Parchman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. Discussion, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 15, is consider and possibly approve the treasurer's report.
Make a motion.
Approve the report.
Motion's made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, let's get these documents signed. Do you mind if I just start with this amendment, Barbara, before you address anything else, like the insured fire department equipment? All right, item number 16, approve budget amendments. This is item number three of the new year, 2023-03 is the budget amendment number, and this is related to training for the new county clerk that we approved back on the 26th of September. Commissioners Court approved an additional position for the newly-elected clerk on September 26th for the period of October 1 through December 31st. The goal of this position is to allow one-on-one, hands-on training for the new clerk. This increase in cost is to be paid by the county clerks, R&amp;M, is that records management? Is that what that is? Not repair and maintenance? Which meets the requirements for these funds. The budget amendment reflects the salary and related benefits for this position. Essentially, this is $7,725 worth of additional salary. Now, going along with that, we have the usual FICA, Medicare, retirement, hospitalization, and dental, for a grand total of $12,299. That would be, again, not pulled out of our general county funds for things like this that pop up, contingencies, that's the word I'm struggling to find, but that would come out of Joan's records management fund. She has enough money in there to cover this. So about $12,299 to reflect our approval of that additional position through the end of the year. Okay, along, that's the only one of those. Barbara submitted, along with your report there, is there anything that we need to discuss on this insured fire department equipment? Barbara has given you a list as part of her report there, that itemizes the pieces of equipment that we believe are Titus County-owned pieces of equipment. In fact, we pay for the insurance on it. We have a 2010 cargo trailer, a 1992 F-700 truck, a 2015 F-350 chassis, a 2010 Ford pickup truck, and a 2003 Pierce pumper. That's the big-ticket item on there. That $213,495, is that our cost basis, or is that the current insured stated value on that?
I think that's the cost basis, but I don't know.
I, I think that sounds about right. I remember at one point, we split about a $400,000 purchase on that. And so we bought that back several years ago. So that's, that's a major piece of a county fire department would be pumper, and I'm glad that we're in agreement that that would be deemed to be a Titus County piece for that big pumper truck.
Essentially, the item on there from 1992. We still have it on the insurance, but Chief McCray has confirmed, and the Commissioners confirmed for us last year, that item was likely sold at auction sometime between 1992 and now. We are not able to locate it, so I recommend we take that off the insurance. There's no reason to insure an item that's been either salvaged out that we use the pieces, piece by piece, but we've not taken it off.
But it's not driving around. It's not driving around anywhere.
It's not driving around. The other two items that are listed there is 2010. Chief McCray and the city council listed it 2009, but the titles that we have say 2010. Chief McCray did send me a copy of the inside door, you know, the, whatever goes on there. Frankly, I'm not smart enough to understand, to read that, but the title says 2010. So if we do decide to leave the county, the city, then, I think we know which vehicles those are. It's just a question of, they have it listed as nine and we have.
One's a, one's a trailer and one's a pickup truck?
Yes, sir.
Hmm. Gosh, you would think it'd be easy to determine.
Well, I thought you got it on the title.
Just different, different year.
Yeah, I thought, that's right.
On the VIN number, there's a letter in there to tell what year it is.
There's one, there's one letter in, in the VIN number that's not correct.
It also shows the production date. Typically, if they're manufactured after October of that year, they're a valid year.
They're both October.
Yeah, both October.
So they're probably bar 10's in? Okay.
As a rule.
Because it does say 10 slash O9. Maybe that's why we thought they were O9s and why the price is 10.
Okay, that's just some side information. It's not part of this budget amendment item that does need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the amendments.
Motion to approve that training for a county clerk amendment made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 17, sign, pay orders, and approve payment of current bills.
Make a motion, we pay our bills.
Motion's made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 18, closing comments by county judge and commissioners. Thanks again, everybody, for your continued efforts in the subject of fire protection. You know, let's continue to do what we feel is right. I think we've done that today, and we've extended this relationship with the city for primary protection. We still have some unknowns on beyond that, and we've got to balance fiscal responsibility with providing what we believe is the best fire protection that we can afford, and that may be with a county fire department, it may be in tandem with the city of Mount Pleasant. But I appreciate the city of Mount Pleasant and their continuing cooperation, trying to work through this. Seems like we gain a little bit and we lose a little bit each day that goes by, but I think we had some very important meetings here within the last couple of weeks, and I appreciate, you know, the meetings that continue to go on behind the scenes as we put a lot of thought into this, and thanks to Barbara for, you know, keeping us apprised of how the decisions that we make affect the finances of the county, so.
Can I jump in right there, Jim?
Sure.
I just want to bring to your attention and keep you apprised, the contract for one year for 1.3 million is an increase from last year of just over $305,000. Now, we have a $125,000 increase already budgeted, so we will have a budget amendment for a little over $180,000 that will come out of contingency for that one year with the city.
And that gobbles up about 40% of our.
About that, almost that.
Of our.
About 400,000.
Contingency account. All right, what else, Barbara?
That's all.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Parchman, I'll start on your end.
I'd like to start off by saying I'd like to send prayers out to two families, the Bragg family and the Deloach family. Curtis Deloach, he works for me, precinct one, he lost his dad this past weekend, and sure, a big tough time for all of them, so. And also, Andy Enzley has been so kind to send us some job specs, description for a fire chief, fire marshal, and you guys can look at them, and I think it'd be a good idea to go ahead and have Barbara to put an ad in the paper, get this, get this thing started as fast as possible, so that kind of gives you something to look at, and, you know, that's all I have.
Would you, for somebody that knows more about the Bragg family situation, who would comment on them? Maybe one of y'all as we get down there. All right, thank you. Commissioner Fitch?
Send my condolences out to both those families, Bragg family and the Deloach family. I'm praying for thinking about them.
Tough weekend. Commissioner Applewhite?
We also had a guy that worked for me, his uncle passed away last week, and condolences to the Bragg family and the Mayfield family and the Bragg family, the Deloach family. It's been a hard week for a lot of people.
Commissioner Parker?
I'd just like to send my condolences out also to them. Robbie's been on the fire department for 20-something years now.
The Mount Pleasant Fire Department?
Yes, sir.
And he was a captain, as I understand?
Yes, sir. He, he just made captain two, three years back, I think it was. But he's been there, been there a long time, about as long as Chris has been with the sheriff's department, his brother, so. Robbie's a good, good kid. I've known him for years. He, they went to church, his whole family went to church with us for years, and he's been snow skiing with us with the youth group and all of that for years. So it was a, a pretty tragic deal.
Do we know any funeral arrangements at this point?
There hasn't been any made, to my knowledge. They were supposed to, to let me know when they heard something, but haven't heard anything yet, so I figured it'd probably be towards the end of the week, probably.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Actually, I do have one.
Yeah, sure.
In response to what Commissioner Parchman mentioned, the possibility of putting an ad in the paper for a fire chief, if we're going to pay for that with American Rescue Plans and funds, I mean, there's some requirements that we have to follow, and we've set aside those funds to do that. Are y'all prepared for me to move forward with putting that in the newspaper?
I, I think we need to do, if we're ready to do that, I think it needs to go through the correct procedures in case we do want to use ARPA monies for this. Yeah, absolutely.
I've spoken with Mark Taylor, and he said it's important that we have the job description prepared, and then we advertise in the newspaper as if we were bidding something, so you put it in there for two weeks, wait, wait your 10 days, and then, you know, open those things and Commissioners review them at that time. But, you know, the first question, that that, whoever, that, you know, winds up being your first choice is going to be, what is that, what's the salary benefit? And so at some point, we need to have a discussion about those kinds of things.
Yes, exactly. All right, anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I might get motion.
Motion, Commissioner Fitch. Second, Commissioner Parchman. All in favor, say aye.